Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us here at the Madera City Council. It is 6:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. I hereby call by call the regular meeting of the Madera City Council to order at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. The city council meeting will be livestreamed at the city website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. Enter ID 95129019587, hashtag followed by star nine on your phone to speak. Comments will also be received via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West 4th Street, Madera, California, 93637. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vegas.
I'm here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
And Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Would you all please join me by standing for the invocation led tonight by Pastor Joyce Lane of Glory of Zeon Ministry?
Thank you, praise God. In James 1:5, "Lord, you said, if any of you like wisdom, let him or her ask of God, who gives to all liberally and without reproach, and it will be given to him or to her." You are the only source of true wisdom, and you've promised to give it to us. And we're asking, we're depending upon you to fulfill your promise. Lord, we'd love Madera, the city of Madera. We appreciate the city council, all of those leaders that you have placed and given to Madera. We do not presume to know how to do what you've called us to do. So we depend upon you for your wisdom and your counsel. We choose to believe that God will give wisdom to all who ask. So, Lord, we ask that we get the blessing to the city of Madera, the citizens of Madera. I speak blessings over the city council, the mayor. We're very appreciative of all of those that you have set in place in order to manage the city of Madera, in Jesus' name we pray. And all of the people did say yes and amen to the will of God. God bless.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Lane. Would you all please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Chief Watson?
Flag salute, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I ask my colleagues if you have any changes or additions to the agenda. Hearing none, seeing none, we will now, I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues.
Mayor, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Gallegos. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas. I believe that's a yes. Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Final vote, 6-0, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda shall be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions shall be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Alicia, do we have on the public comments?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Thank you very much. We have no written communications. We have a presentation by the Department of Public Health update on COVID-19. Good evening, Sarah, welcome.
Good evening. I'm happy to be with you tonight. We are still heading in the right direction. Our case rate is 6.2 per 100,000. If that gets down to two by next Tuesday and stays under two for the following week, we would move into the yellow tier. Our positivity rate is 1.6%. We're moving in the right direction, but as a reminder, the tier system will go away as of June 15. I'll focus mostly on vaccination tonight. Area A and Area C, which are the ones that include the city of Madera, are at about 30, between 36 and 38% vaccinated. And that is based on at least one dose of either Pfizer or Moderna or a shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson. That's really right in the middle with regards to the other reporting areas in Madera County. We are, these percentages shift a little bit as more people become eligible. And because recently, age 12 to 15 became eligible, that changed the denominator in which we're calculating the percentage. So they tend to bounce a little bit when more people become eligible. But we are moving in the right direction with regards to immunization. We looked tonight with the state at our seroprevalence, which is basically looking at antibodies in blood tests. And between people having previously had COVID or being vaccinated, they would have antibodies. And the Central Valley region is at 70% immune at this point. So that is excellent news. I imagine that is the real reason why we're seeing such low case rates among our population. We're still continuing to vaccinate as many people as possible because we'd like to get that immunity as high as we can. And currently in Madera County, individuals who have gotten at least one dose totals 57,000 people. About 41,000 of those are, were vaccinated by Madera County Public Health Department. We are the largest provider of vaccinations in the county. We are doing lots of outreach in unusual ways with regards to vaccination. We're really pushing school-based clinics. You may have seen in Board of Supervisors meeting, we passed a program in which, using CalViva dollars, we're going to be rolling out school vaccine promotion fundraisers. Where a dollar for every person vaccinated goes to the school for sports, teams, clubs, and the arts. And so, all of the schools who have already hosted vaccination clinics will, of course, receive funds as well. But we're really wanting to pair vaccination with a sense of community camaraderie and supporting our kids getting back to activities that have been missed and super important for them. Everyone has questions about masks. We know that the CDC has put out information that everyone who has vaccinated does not need to wear masks indoors any longer. The CDC did not give the states, any of us, heads up that announcement was coming. And so, there are a few weeks that between now and June 15th, in which CDPH is, has put out guidance that we're going to continue to mask until June 15th, at which time individuals who have been vaccinated are not required to wear masks indoors. I know that can get kind of tricky for employers. It can get tricky for lots of public places. And so, the statement that we put out as a Department of Public Health is that encourage businesses to post the information, what's required, but to not engage people that don't wear masks. We don't want people to really, you know, get into arguments or have conflict over the masking issue. It's really just a few weeks away to June 15th, but we, of course, want to communicate and encourage people in a positive way, that masking is still a good idea. I wanted also just quickly to mention, I'll put a link to this in the chat. We have a vaccine dashboard now. And also, a new thing that I'll just tuck in, I know that this is a COVID presentation, but our department in collaboration with lots of other partners completed a homelessness assessment. And it really had some interesting findings and has focused priorities for work moving into the future. So I'll put a link to that in the chat as well, if you'd like to take a read of our homeless assessment. I'm available for any questions.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions of Ms. Popps? Well, as always, thank you very much. I'm hoping, oh, did Ms. Gallegos, did you have something?
Yes, Mayor Garcia, I just wanted to thank Sarah, and this is probably coming to an end of seeing you every council meeting, but thank you for putting up with our questions and all the concerns that we've had. It's been a tough road, but a long road. And I know we're clearly not out of the woods, but I thank you for all your patience and your support in getting that, having us be informed on what's happening with the county. And so, I thank you for your time every, I say that you've come and met with us. So, don't be a stranger, even though you're not meeting with us, you still could keep us in the loop of what's happening with the county, even though we're, all the difficulties that are happening there. So, thank you again.
It's been my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you very much. We will now move on. We have no introductions, we don't have any workshops. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Matters under, listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on any consent calendar item?
Do not, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues.
I'll move to approve the consent counter as presented.
A motion by Councilwoman Gallegos to approve the consent calendars, second by Councilmember Artemio Vegas. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas. Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you. We will now move on to item C, public hearings. Item C1, public hearing on the CDBG. I believe Ms. Idieta has this item?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you this evening relates to the CDBG program. The city administers the CDBG program, which is managing a grant. Every year, the city receives an annual allocation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Agency. And this allocation is an additional allocation related to addressing COVID. So I will share my screen to begin our presentation. Can you see the screen, sir?
Yes.
Very good. So, tonight's item is a public hearing on the CDBG COVID-19 Round 3 funding allocation in the amount of $402,643. The objective of the public hearing is for council to receive input from the public and the block grant commission on how to utilize $402,643 in COVID CDBG Round 3 funding. And for council to make tentative determinations for the allocations. During a previous public hearing in May 2000, May 6, 2020, staff brought an item before you and conducted a public hearing to solicit input from council and the community as to how COVID money should be utilized. And at that time, council agreed to prioritize CDBG COVID funding for the following needs: rent, mortgage assistance, food assistance, utility billing assistance, and small business assistance. So at that time, we had received an allocation under COVID Round 1. And by September of 2020, the city was able to distribute Round 1 funding in the amount of $486,000 to four organizations that address those particular needs. Around that same time, the city was informed that it was eligible to apply for COVID Round 3, an additional allocation in the amount of $402,000. And council might be asking, well, what happened to Round 2? That allocation or Round 2 funding was particular to counties. So the city was not eligible to, to apply for COVID Round 2 funding. The city staff quickly distributed notice of funding and accepted applications for the Round 3 between November 4th and November 23rd of 2020, and received two applications. Again, the applicants were asked to address those key priorities that council had approved. And earlier this month, on May 3rd, these applications were presented to the block grant commission for consideration and for the block grant commission to make recommendations to council as to how to allocate this, this $402,000. I will be turning it over to the chair of the block grant commission in just a minute so that she can explain why they have made the recommendations that they're presenting to you this evening. But before that, I want to make a clarification as to the caps on this funding. Typically during our annual allocations, we have explained that there are caps as to the particular uses for the funding. There is a 20% cap for administration and a 15% cap for public service. However, for COVID funding or for the COVID allocations, there is no cap for the public service. So it's a, it's an opportunity to maximize allocations for public services and distribute more money along those, with those organizations. There is still no cap for capital projects. And then, the city received two applications under Round 3 with a total ask of $335,000, so slightly under the available $402,000. I will now like to turn it over to the chair of the block grant commission, DJ Becker. I also want to congratulate her for being selected as the chair during this, the meeting that took place earlier this month. So DJ, if you are unmuted, I'd like to turn it over to you.
That complicated on/off button. Well, thank you for having me tonight, and good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and staff. This was quite a surprise to get this additional money for the community. We did not really think we had time to bring it back and reopen and reallocate the funds. So we were pleased with the fact that we had two applications. They were both strong performers, but we have to conform to HUD requirements and efficiency and delivery. So, we felt that a, the committee felt that a one-third, two-thirds split was appropriate based on methods of expenditure and timeframe of expenditure. And given that Madera Coalition for Community Justice was spending at a quicker rate than the other applicant, CAPMC. So it was voted that two-thirds of the remaining funds go to Madera Coalition and the remaining one-third to CAPMC. CAPMC did respond that they would accept the additional one-third funding. So, it was a pleasant surprise. It's going where it's needed, and it's just a windfall. So we were very pleased. So, it's being used to assist residents that are being the most impacted by COVID-19. So I guess at this point, any questions, or we'll turn it back to Yvette for completion of the presentation?
Thank you, DJ. So there's still a couple of steps that need to take place before we can get this money out to, to the community. HUD still requires a public review period. And for this allocation, they waived the 30-day requirement or actually just reduced it to a five-day public review and comment period, which will begin tomorrow, should council allocate this evening. So, the public review comment period would expire on May 26 at 5:00 PM. That public review period is to comment on tentative allocations. So interested parties are invited to provide comment, written comment to the city to consider before bringing back the item for final allocations. I have listed the address, and we are also listing an email address to the program manager for the CDBG program to submit written comments on tentative allocations. So at this time, we would like to request that the council open the public hearing, review and consider the block grant commission Round 3 funding recommendations, and for council to make tentative allocations. Staff will then bring the item back. We are planning to bring it back during the June 16 meeting and request that council approve final allocations at that time. We would also bring any written comments that staff receives relating to the tentative allocations. After that, staff will need to amend the 2019-2020 action plan and submit it to HUD for review. Staff will respond to any questions or concerns that HUD may have regarding the substantial amendment and the incorporation of these activities into the 2019-2020 annual action plan. So with that, we will answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much for that report. Yvette, also, also I want to add my congratulations to my good friend DJ for the chair, chairperson, the election to that. Thank you very much for, to all of our folks really, for stepping up and volunteering to help our community. Alicia, do we have any public, members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. I will now ask for discussion or a motion from my colleagues. And Yvette, this is for tentative allocation of funds. In other words, approving this, so that then we can come back at a later date and make another.
I saw move to approve C1 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve C1 by Councilwoman Gallegos, seconded by Councilwoman Anita Evans. Alicia, would you now call roll?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, but I just wanted to clarify, are we approving something or are we just having a public hearing?
So as I understand it, go ahead, Yvette.
You are, you have conducted the public hearing and you are approving the allocations.
I got you.
However, they have to go through a review process of five days, and then there will be a final decision.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Hilda, for helping us certify that, so.
Ten yes.
Can we approve, can we continue the roll call, Alicia?
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D1, Mr. Arnoldo Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Arnoldo Rodriguez, City Manager. The item before you this evening, it's an update on the code of conduct that was initially discussed by council and approved going back to September of 2019. A couple of the veteran council members may recall that at the time, the grand jury had released a report on the city of Madera that indicated that the council did not have a code of conduct. Subsequent to that grand jury report, staff along with council prepared a code of conduct which was presented and adopted by council, I believe, September of 2019, if memory serves me. Within that, as, as time has progressed, city attorney Hilda Montoya and myself, along with the city clerk, have reviewed the existing code of conduct, and we are making some recommendations. The, the principal reason for that is just to make sure that, that in the spirit of continuous improvement, that we're, that we're always looking at our protocols, our standard of operating procedures, to make sure that they, that they're reflective of contemporary guidelines comparable to other communities. And at the same time, if issues, if any issues arise, or potentially if issues could arise, simply trying to cut them off, cutting them off at the path. So with that, I do have a presentation this evening. This has been on a couple of previous agendas. However, due to time constraints at those meetings, we said, well, it's not a time-sensitive matter. Let, let's present it whenever we can. And so again, so the purpose of this meeting is to present an updated code of conduct. At the same time, though, if council has any feedback, we would welcome the feedback. What we attempted to do is capture what we thought were best practices. That's not to say we didn't, but that was our goal. And so with that, I will be sharing my, my screen, Mayor, and council members. And hopefully I don't, hopefully I don't have any hiccups like I believe the last two times I've had. So again, so this captures the initial discussion on June or September of 2019. This is a quick calendar overview in terms of where we've been at, going all the way back to 2019. The code of conduct, as council's aware, is broken down into four parts, a preamble, ethics, code of conduct guidelines, and then the implementation. The, the short of it is that the code of conduct is largely self, self-enforcing, self-enforcing by council and other members of boards and commissions. A couple of key recommended updates. Again, and the goal is, is to comply with both the letter and the spirit of the law. And we attempted to capture that in the code of conduct. It's to be independent, impartial, and fair judgment in actions by boards, commissions, and councils to ensure that we're using. to ensure that we're using our public offices for the public good and not for personal gain. And at the same time, to make sure that, that deliberations and the process of deliberations is done so in the open, in an atmosphere of respect and stability. Oftentimes, whenever there's agenda items, people can become very passionate because we're talking about their community. And at the same time, we simply want to be respectful of, of the process and community members and make sure that we're inviting public testimony and we're soliciting public testimony. And at the same time, that we're being conscientious during our deliberations, that we're being respectful in the process. A couple of things, a couple of key items. It, it's that the original version, they probably not provide the best clarity on. That, that at the time, we, we identified city council, we, we were not very clear in terms of other board and commissions. So the updated code of conduct, it's explicit that this applies to the city council and any city board, commission or committee. So for example, that would include the, the airport advisory committee, the planning commission, the block grant development commission, and we have a series of commissions, boards and committees. And the updated code of conduct is very clear that, that any city board, commission or committee, the code of conduct is applicable to them. The term member was expanded to make sure that, that we capture the various bodies of the city. And again, the initial version in, in 2019 was, was not, it's not that it was unclear, rather it was silent. And we attempted to capture all of that. And again, the term elected official and appointed official, it's an inclusive term and they're interchangeable. During the initial version in 2019, we attempted to capture that, but we should have clarified that. So this adds clarifying language for a lot of those things. So there's not a lot of new language in the code of conduct, rather what we attempted to do was add clarifying language. That, that was probably the biggest takeaway, or that's probably the biggest takeaway of the updated one. We attempted to, to identify changes by underlining them. That's when your staff report and you see two versions, you see one version that's pretty messy. You see one version that's clean with no underline. The clean version, that, that's the one that we're recommending that council adopt. The one that's underlying with strikeouts, we're, we're simply attempting to identify the, the proposed changes. So key recommended updates in terms of ethics, acts in the public interest. We're not recommending any changes to that in comparison to the 2019. Compliance with the law, we, we simply attempted to capture the various regulations and applicable and state laws, which as council is very well aware, there are a lot of laws in California. The conduct of members, there's no changes there. Respect for the process, a few minor tweaks, but nothing that I would consider major and the conduct of public meetings, there's no proposed changes there. Number six, decisions based on merit, we're not recommending any changes. Item seven, communication, that's a new item. We added this section to, to, to encourage that whenever members have substantive conversations with community members or developers or any source from the outside, that, that, that they, that they share that information in public. And it's always best, and again, and this is in the spirit of the law to make sure that, and, and that things are done so in public. And then we also added additional verbiage. Should a council member elect or, or a board member, and again, the term is inclusive now. It can be a board member, a council member, a committee member, a commission member in terms of when it's appropriate to recuse themselves and the process for recusing themselves. And here we're staying in accordance with the law, the law being the Brown Act, which identifies how when recuses themselves and when it's appropriate to recuse themselves. In terms of ethics, number nine, gifts and favors, we added verbiage in terms of when it is appropriate to accept gifts and how those have to be disclosed pursuant to, to to the Form 700, which is regulated by the FPPC. Number 10, confidential information, we added verbiage simply saying that, that, that people should respect confidentiality regarding closed session matters. Use of public resources, we're not recommending any changes there versus what was in the 2019 version. And representation of public interest, we added some additional verbiage, again. This is not necessarily all new verbiage. What we attempted to do is clarify some of the items to make sure that again, that they represent or that they reflect current standards of practice. Number 13, advocacy, we're not recommending any changes. Number 14, policy rules of members of the city council. And again, city council here is all-inclusive to capture all of the various boards. And this is specific to what's the role of the city manager and the city council? That the city manager, it, it's, it manages kind of the city, but the city manager responds to the city council as a body. Number 15, independence of boarding commissions, we had a couple of minor recommendation changes and we can dive into any one of these if the council would like. But we do have a good number of slides here, talking about this item. And then we have number 16, positive workplace environment. We, we added some additional verbiage there in terms of how, how members engage with city staff. And again, and this is not rather council, this is rather, rather all boards, commissions, committees. And I, I'm committed, commissions and commission and commissions, yeah, because it's all three of them. Conduct guidelines. Some of these are shown as, 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 as new, but some of them are just clarifications. We honor the role of the presiding officer in maintaining order. So for example, during city council meetings, it would be the mayor. When you have planning commission, it's the planning commission chairperson. You have the BGC, it's the chair of the community. So just making notifying kind of whoever the presiding officer is and that they help manage and at the same time that, that other members can respect that responsibility. Practiceability and decorum and discussions and debate. That's again, things can be very spirited, especially if you have community members that have differences of opinion or recommendations. It's, people are very passionate about their community, like we all are. And so sometimes things can be said in a moment of passion and we just want to be respectful in those moments.
Mr. Rodriguez, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to underscore that on this section for contact guidelines, you will see if you're looking, if you're following along on the tracked version, you'll see a lot of added language. What we did is we took the, the, the headings. In the, in the current version, we just have heading, headings. For example, the heading would be practiceability and decorum and discussions and debate. We added text under each of those subheadings, just for clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Hilda. Thanks for clarifying that. Avoid personal comment that could affect or that could offend, I'm sorry, other members, and this is under recommended updates. In terms, again, whenever there's, there is discussion, things can be heated and again, it's just a matter of respecting one another and providing and, and, and not offending one another. Demonstrate subsection D, demonstrate effective problem-solving approaches. Again, and sometimes there are people that will have differences of opinion or different perspectives. It's just a matter of how we engage those individuals or with one another to make sure that we're being respectful. And, and at the same time, trying to find common ground. Sometimes, I think the mayor has said this in the past, maybe it was two meetings ago, that democracy at times can be messy. And that's a democratic process, but it's simply respecting one another's perspectives. But as a council member and as a staff person, one of the things that I think we're always attempting to do is identify solutions. And sometimes we'll have to give a little bit to try to move the organization forward and the decision-making process forward. Terms of number two A, be welcoming to speakers and treat them with care and respect. Oftentimes, especially when we have more, more potentially controversial items, we will hear a lot of people, for example, during a cannabis meeting recently, I believe we had 16 speakers or we had 16 written comments, maybe we even had more speakers. And again, allowing them an opportunity to, to state their position or their perspective. And hopefully at the end of the day, we collectively gain a better understanding. So then we can be more informed of how they feel or how the community believes the community or the city should move forward. Elected and appointed officials conduct within public meetings, be fair and equitable in allocating public hearing time to individual speakers. And again, this is the three-minute rule generally. However, that's largely come left to the discretion of the mayor. And, but it's just been very equitable because again, we can have meetings sometimes and if you have a lot of speakers on, on an item that they perceive to be controversial, we could be here for a very lengthy period of time. Practice active listening and that's just, this has not been an issue in Madera, but oftentimes you will hear in some other city councils, council members taking a phone call in the middle of a meeting and that's, they've actually been reprimanded by local judges saying, hey, you really shouldn't do that. You should practice active listening. And this is specifically when community members are speaking. Maintain an open mind. Members of the public deserve an opportunity to influence thinking of elected and appointed officials. That's try not to make your decision prior to the public hearing because we may hear something during the public meeting that, that may shed, that may offer a, a different perspective that may influence the decision-making process. Item two, ask for clarification but avoid debate and argument with the public. Only the presiding officer may interrupt a speaker during a presentation. However, member may ask a question. May ask the presiding officer for a point of order to ask for clarification and that would be appropriate. Treat all staff as professionals. Clear, honest communication that respects ability and experience and dignity of everyone is expected. And that's just professional decorum. Do not disrupt city staff who perform their jobs. One thing about council members is, is they're held in very high regard by staff members. And so whenever council members approach a staff member, staff does get a little nervous because you're held in such a high regard because at the end of the day, you are the elected officials. And I can assure you if, if a city council member may say something even in passing, staff oftentimes takes orders or marching orders. So if a council member says, boy, can that street's in really bad shape. I, I can assure you, staff is scrambling to figure out how to wait, how, how to make some repairs. And, and they'll, you know, call their supervisor or they'll call someone else and eventually it gets to me saying, well, council member said so and so. And I'm like, yeah, but they understand that there's a process, there's a CIP program that we go through. Like, and that's just being cognizant of the role of the council member. Never publicly criticize an individual employee. That's again, just professional decorum. Do not get involved in administrative functions. If there's an issue with the staff person, council would come to the city manager. So we could talk about that or the process itself. So again, that's just professional decorum. Do not solicit political support from staff. I, I, I don't believe this has been an issue during my time here at the city of Madera, but I understand in other cities, it's, it's, it's not uncommon for, for council members when they're running for reelection or for some other office to approach staff or support. It just puts staff in between a rock and hard spot politically because they probably want to help. But then who's running behind some other regulations? And Hilda, I'm confident can probably give you examples of every single one of these with her with her vast experience. And then no attorney-client relationship. Member shall not seek to establish an attorney-client relationship with the city attorney, including his or her staff and attorneys contracted to work on behalf of the city. Again, this has not been an issue to, to my knowledge here in Madera. With that, it's, obviously it's happened in other cities. Item number four, if attending a board meeting or commission meeting, be careful to only express personal opinions and not those of pain. So for example, if we have a council member that was going to attend an airport committee meeting, not, not indicating what the council's position is because at that point you would only be representing yourself. As a general rule of thumb, I, I believe Hilda would probably agree. This general of them is probably not best to attend those meetings, at least in person, because it could potentially influence the votes of those members. Hilda, do you have anything to add on this item? Because this one could get a little.
Yeah, there, there are certain boards and commissions where it's more of a dialogue and their sharing of information. I think this admonition is more geared to what are public hearings, for example, public hearing for a conditional use permit where there may be an appeal to the city council. So it's more what, what's considered a, an adjudicatory proceeding, a formal public hearing. Grant, you'll, you'll, you'll get to those, for example, in your cannabis where you're going to be granting permits or theoretically revoking permits in the future. And some things before another board or commission. The city council members should not express their opinion because they will then act as a hearing bodies for those kinds of decisions.
Let me contact with boarding and commission members to do questions of clarification. This is not that you can't talk to your appointees, but at the same time, not necessarily trying to advocate for a position because going back to what the city attorney said a few minutes ago, if an item can eventually come before the city council, you, you want to be sure that your arms, kind of, kind of, and your arms length because oftentimes you could be the hearing body for certain items and conditional use permits are a very good example that those could eventually be come to the, to this city council on an appeal. Respect that boarding commission members show the community, not individual council members. That I believe is very self-explanatory. Be respectful of diverse opinions and this is something that we've talked about. We're not all gonna. We all collectively look at things through a slightly different lens as the community members. And it's just a matter of just respecting those diverse opinions because we all have different life experiences. And whatever, we're, 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 you know, sometimes people are in different phases of their lives and they'll probably have a difference of opinions. And there's a lot of examples we can point to. I think apartment complexes is pretty common with. Apartment complexes could be controversial, but at some point, many of us have probably lived in an apartment at a different phase of your life. And those are very hotly contested oftentimes in some other communities. Keep political support away from public forums. Again, most of these issues are, have not been prevalent here in the city of Madera. But obviously, when we go through, through, through the codes of context from a lot of communities, the same, the same types of items come up because these are themes that other communities have experienced. So again, this is best practices. We, we added a section, clarifying language.
Arnaldo?
I'm sorry, Mayor, please.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I'm just going to ask, DJ, could you hold your questions to the end, please? Thank you.
And then we are recommending a new section specifically to the usage of social media. Social media is becoming a very common practice. I mean, in terms of engaging the, 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 the public. I, I understand and Hilda can probably attest to this in terms of daily change when something's on social media, that, that has been an issue in other communities. Whereas hypothetically, if a council member posts how they're going to vote on social media and other council members have liked it, that you, you shouldn't do that. So, so anything that you're posting on social media, be very cognizant of the Brown Act. Hopefully I captured that correctly, Hilda. We can probably spend an hour talking about this very issue.
Right. I think the language that's actually added under that section is pretty clear in saying that the council members have to, need to be cognizant of the Brown Act. And the Brown Act prohibits a member from responding directly to any communication on a matter that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council that is made or posted or shared by another member of the council. So you could, you, even though you have to be, you have to be careful with all communications, but you have to be extremely scrupulous with respect to anything that your colleagues on the council or in the case of boards and commission, your colleagues on boards and commissions post. And I, I sent an email, a memorandum on that particular issue to the council. If you want to just email me and I'll forward it, forward it to you again for further clarification.
Thank you, Hilda. And, and, and as social media becomes more prevalent, this is obviously becoming an issue for, for not necessarily Madera, but just in general in terms of different boards and commissions. The enforcement, we, we did add a language clarifying the members' responsibility to read the code, to become familiar with the code. And any member who becomes aware of any breach of this code should, should forward it to either myself or the, or the city attorney. A lot of this, again, it's, it's offense enforcement. It's, it's obviously, we're all professionals, obviously. And, and the same thing goes with the other boards and the commissions. So again, and this may sound as though it's the council's doing anything wrong and that's not the case. But again, we're simply trying to put the committees, the commissions and the various boards that we have. And again, some of these issues are not Madera-centric, but they've obviously, there are issues that, that have been coming up in other communities as well. some of these issues are not Madera-centric, but they've obviously, there are issues that um that have been coming up in other communities as well. So we attempted to capture them here. Posting and distribution, we we will be sharing these. We're going to be making them available on our website so it's very clear to the community that they exist. We'll be emailing them to the council and obviously they're they're in our city um on our city council website because they are posted on the agenda. Uh, sanctions, we 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 clarified the term elected officials to to capture the different groups that we talked about because again, uh prior to that, we were silent. Um, and again, um, um, any type of sanction is not limited to council members, but it's also includes commission members, boards, or committees. And we we added clarifying language that this should come back to the city council annually. And so um what we'll do is uh more than likely every May, if if it's if it's adopted this evening, what we'll do is whenever it's adopted, we'll try to bring it back around the same time every year. And the main reason for it is you want to treat this as a living document as things evolve. For example, um, who would have thought fifteen years ago, social media would have been a big thing, right? Or ten years ago? But it's obviously grown a lot and you always want to make sure that that you're addressing potential issues. And it's never a matter of uh or it's generally not trying to uh trying to react to something rather what you're trying to do is put language in there to try to prevent something from occurring. That's 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 generally the goal.
It's preventive guidance.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so our recommendation this evening is obviously to deliberate. I had to talk about it if you like. If you have any points of clarification or if you have any suggested language changes, we would welcome those. But if not, we would be recommending this evening that you adopt the the code. But obviously, you have plenty of alternatives at your disposal. You can recommend changes. Uh, a council member can say, you know, uh, can you clarify some language? Uh, can you add this? Because we obviously attempted to 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 take a macro perspective at this. But I can assure you, there are probably things we potentially missed. Uh, because there's a lot of different things come up and there's probably things that other communities address that we didn't address. But but again, in the spirit of continuous improvement, we are all more for uh we're completely for making sure that we have a a a thorough document that reflects the best uh standard uh standard operating procedures for the council and the various boards that represent the city and discuss city business. So with that, I will complete my presentation there and I'll turn it back over to you unless Hilda has anything to add that I may have glossed over. It's a lot. I know it's a mouthful. Um, and I don't want to go over every, you know, over every detail. So thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Arnaldo for that. I will uh uh, I will say that it was actually quite interesting, some of the points that you were making, and I really appreciate the work that you guys have done. You had some clarification underneath the point, so that was that was really a great addition. Um, so we were gonna open it up to public comments from the public. I know, DJ, that you had a comment that you wanted to make.
All right. Um, was this drafted in-house or was it boilerplate?
Mr. Rodriguez, could you uh?
The original one, I I the origin, I I think if you look online, you'll see probably ninety percent of them look similar. Uh, so did we uh create it from scratch? No. The original one was uh taken by Mr. Rodriguez and uh he utilized various uh uh codes that are out there but uh from different cities and put one together. And then I uh with respect to the most current one, I did add uh quite a bit uh after looking at other codes that that had language that I thought would be helpful to explain some of the language.
It it just seems to be getting progressively a little more restrictive and possibly quelling.
It's it's it's, but it is, it is what what's used in many, many cities. Again, it's preventive guidance. It it's not uh to say that this this council or boards and commissions have gone out there and violated all sorts of of rules. Uh, but uh without these codes of conduct, uh, you do get more violations and you don't have the understanding by members of boards and commissions and and certain councils that you just can't do certain things. Uh, nothing in here goes beyond the law. Nothing in here goes beyond the law.
Um, as a member of the ADA committee for years, um, I've always worked to include city council members in our goals and missions and aspirations. So could you reiterate your position on or the legal position on that again, please?
I think that I I think the whole thing there was not to have discussions. I think I clarified it when Mr. Rodriguez asked me to do that. I said it wasn't uh to limit discussion and collaboration between the commissioners and members of the council. It was more intended for for uh adjudicatory types of proceedings where you do have a hearing concerning.
Of course, okay. Perhaps I I've missed that nugget, but I've always found it very, very helpful to have council input and participation where possible. With any of the actions that we've tried to tried to take on the committees. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me just finish up uh uh Councilwoman uh Gallegos. Uh, if any more members of the public wish to speak on this item, and then I will address you. Alicia, do we have any more uh input from the public?
No, mayor, not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Councilwoman Gallegos.
I yeah, I would like to thank staff and Hilda for uh the time they put in to draft this new code of conduct. As council members, we asked for this. We were concerned that um some of us were straying off the line and this is to kind of rear us in and and really protect us from any litigation or anything else that we are unaware of. So I thank you for drawing this up and really laying it out for us, especially for the new council members. I can always refer back to it because it's been just so open-ended. There was no really structure to have us make sure that we're walking the line and do what we're asked to do as elected officials. So thank you for your time.
I do not see any more hand raised. Mr. Rodriguez.
Jose. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh. Uh, Mayor Santos Garcia, I appreciate it. I just wanted to follow up on what uh Councilwoman Gallegos said. I think and this stems out of the the grand jury report and, you know, always having some type of governance or a code of conduct, so to speak, for for the council certainly provides guideline for us to be able to conduct ourselves, not only in public, but also out out of public. And and how we uh perceive ourselves or perceive ourselves and how people perceive us. So I think this this guideline certainly helps us uh be become better at what we do in serving the public. So thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Montes.
Couldn't find that in me, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I just wanted to chime in too. Um, you know, being up here, a lot of times we don't know the rules and I I can, uh, you know, my first time being a council member, um, trying to navigate all the stuff, going and hearing some of the horror stories of what has happened in other uh communities. Um, this is really helpful because sometimes, you know, you 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 think you're not you're doing something innocent. Hey, I'm just having a conversation or something, but there are different rules for commissioners and council members and want to be above board. And we also want the perception uh of the public to be a good perception that the council is doing something fixed isn't going to be in on certain things. Um, so this just helps us uh give us good guidance and and it's a reference, right? If we don't want to have to always call Hilda. Because I mean, you know, it's gonna, it it, we're gonna waste her time. Um, not waste her time, but we're gonna use it per time. Um, we're gonna use up the city resources. So we have that. It's good for us to have to refer back to and say, hey, you know, maybe I'm I'm getting close to the line on something. So um, thank you for everything. Uh, thank you, staff, for providing this for us. And um I hope counsel, I know I will probably print out a copy and have it have it in my pocket at all time, but um just to refer back to. Kidding. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montes. Uh, Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I just wanted to chime in as well and say thank you to um city manager, Arnaldo. Thank you to Hilda. Thank you to the staff. And thank you for the protection of us as well as for the information. So we do know now that if anything should occur, what our code of conduct is and, you know, we don't teeter-totter across the line. But just thank you for just giving us the information and making us aware of, you know, the the lines not to cross. You know, it's it's easy sometimes and I just truly appreciate each and every one of you. If I didn't call your name, I just want you to know that I thank you for everything. So that's my take.
All right. Seeing no more raised hands or uh we will move on to uh my colleagues for a motion on item D one.
Move to approve item D one as presented.
It's all right. We got you. We got you. Uh, motion to approve item D one by Councilmember Montes, seconded by Councilmember uh uh Gallegos. Alicia, would you please call bro?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item D two, approval of employee health and welfare benefits providers for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I believe, uh, Wendy, you you have this report?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Go ahead and start the presentation. So this item is for consideration of the July one, twenty twenty-one health and welfare benefits for the city's employees. There are multiple components, as were noted in the report, and we'll start with um the medical insurance renewal. The city currently purchases a high deductible PPO and we self-insure the deductible layer. So with that self-insurance layer, there is some risk, but we are capped at the deductible amount for each employee. There was a quote to renew the existing plan um between the the PPO and the self-insured layer was an increase of approximately twenty-eight percent, which is very high, um even considering the pandemic. So the city did seek alternatives. The broker provided an option of Prism, which is a public entity health insurance pool. If the city were to consider Prism and join Prism, um, it would be able to offer multiple carriers and multiple plans with each carrier. Um, as you'll recall, I just indicated while we have what's called a cafeteria plan, um, under the IRS, we only have a single choice. Uh, so if we were to join the Prism pool, it would allow us to offer a choice of providers and a choice of plans. Additionally, because Prism is a pool, um, public entity pooling, we do this for our liability, for our workers' comp. Part of what you get from joining a pool is less volatility in the rates. The city's rate, having a standalone plan, has jumped all over the place. Last year, we saw a decrease and then this year we were um followed that decrease with a twenty-eight percent increase. Uh, so a pool has the potential to decrease that volatility. One one difference between the city's existing plan and the Prism option is that the the medical is a January one plan year. We are currently on a July one plan year. So for this reason, the quoted uh plans that were provided in the staff report are eighteen-month rates. So we would have an eighteen-month rate guarantee if we were to join Prism. And then those rates would go through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. And we would have a renewal effective January one, twenty twenty-three. And then going forward, the city's health insurance would be on a January one renewal instead of a seven-one renewal. So in that Prism quote and what was included in the council report, there were three um core plan options from Anthem. Normally what you do when you have a provider and you're offering multiple plans is you have a a core, which is sort of a basic option. And then what is typically referred to an insurance as a buy-it, meaning a richer plan, a lower copay, lower deductible, things like that, make it a richer plan. So the three core plans that the city could choose from were modeled after a Per's Choice PPO. It's a standard PPO. Um, deductible is five hundred per individual, thousand per family. Um, a City of Merced EPO plan, an EPO plan, it's like a PPO, but there's no out-of-network coverage, which has some risk to it. Um, and then a City of Clovis High Deductible Plan uh that's currently offered in Clovis. But that has an extremely high deductible an employee has to meet. The thought there is you fund it with a health savings account where you can put money pre-tax, but it does expose you to having to pay that deductible before you have coverage. And then an Anthem buy-up option was modeled, and that was modeled after the city's current plan, uh, which has a zero-dollar deductible and a ten-dollar copay. There were two Kaiser Core options offered for consideration by Prism. One focused on virtual medicine and the other is a traditional Kaiser HMO-type plan. And then a Kaiser buy-up option, which was ma modeled um after the city's last Kaiser plan, and it actually follows also our current plan, which is a zero-dollar deductible, ten-dollar copay plan. So for the medical insurance, the memorandums of understanding with the bargaining units provide that the city determines the health plan providers and the bargaining units have input on plan design. So staff did meet with the bargaining units um with the plans quoted by Prism and reviewed the plan design. Um, the feedback received included that the Anthem EPO and High Deductible PPO Core Plans were not preferred. Um, they had greater exposure for the employees than a typical PPO. The Kaiser Virtual Visit Plan was not preferred over a standard plan where you have your normal typical office visits. Um, and employees like to have a continued option of a zero-deductible ten-dollar copay plan. So to put some dollars behind uh what these plan designs are, and and these uh dollars are built with some assumptions in them. Uh, because the the Prism option, if we were to to go that route and offer both an Anthem and a Kaiser, the Kaiser premiums are cheaper. So if we were to renew as-is, not make any change, the cost to the medical would be a little over eight hundred nine thousand. Um, if we were to move the city's plan to Prism, assuming twenty percent of individuals move to Kaiser, we would potentially see um a little over two hundred thousand less. So the increase would be five hundred eighty-four thousand. And then if forty percent moved to Kaiser, the annual premium increase would decrease to five hundred eighteen thousand because of those cheaper um premiums on the plan. So the recommendation um as seen in the report on the medical is to move the medical insurance plans to Prism effective July one. Offer two Anthem plans and two Kaiser plans, as noted in attachment one of the staff report. That was the core PPO and the buy-up and the core HMO and the buy-up. The city would be required to join the Prism pool. And then on the self-insured layer that we have right now in our current plan, whether we renew or not, we do have to pay claims through June thirty. And as you know, if someone goes to the doctor's office on June thirty, that claim is going to trickle in sometime in July or August. So we will have what they call a runout on the self-funded layer. That would be included in the insurance reserve fund budget. And then the city would no longer be in the business of self-insuring um part of its medical and the plans would be fully insured through Prism. The next section of the report was on the dental insurance. We currently purchase insurance from Ameritas. Renewal rates came in at fourteen point nine percent for the city's existing plan. The broker negotiated this to seven and a half percent. Um, the broker also saw additional quotes and included Prism, which we just talked about on the medical. Prism offered a Delta Dental Plan to the city. Um, it has a slightly improved plan design related to the orthodontia and the increase is three point three percent over current, which is less than um what our current plan is offering. So staff is recommending if we do move medical to Prism, that we also take dental and take the Delta Dental Plan um as noted in attachment two of the staff report effective July one. Vision Insurance is currently purchased from Superior Vision. Um, we have not had any issues with Superior and they continue to offer us a rate guarantee. They have not changed our rate in several years. Um, so the recommendation there is to actually stay with Superior. It's a well-priced plan. They have a good network and our employees are able to obtain their benefits. Life and Long-Term Disability is another piece of our health and welfare benefits package. We currently purchase directly from Lincoln. The city pays employee life, dependent life, and long-term disability. Employees can purchase additional life, spouse life, and dependent life policy. Our new broker was able to get reduced rates for both the city paid and the voluntary benefits. Prism offers the same benefits through Lincoln Financial that the city currently offers. The rates are the same as the revised rates that the broker was able to get us. So if we do move medical to Prism, it's recommended that life and long-term disability also move for ease of administration. The last piece that was noted in the staff report is our Employee Assistance Program. We purchase EAP and wellness benefits from Halcyon Behavioral. The city is in a rate guarantee period, so there's no change in the rate and the benefits have been well-received. Staff recommends the existing EAP and wellness benefits be renewed with Halcyon Behavioral. Staff recommends the existing EAP and wellness benefits be renewed with Halcyon Behavioral. The summary of the recommended action is to adopt a minute order approving for fiscal year 21, 22, employee health and welfare benefits. Selecting Prism as the medical plan provider with the Anthem and Kaiser plan designs noted in attachment one. Selecting Prism as the dental plan provider with the Delta Dental Plan Design noted in attachment two. Renewing the existing Vision Plan with Superior Vision. Selecting Prism as the life and long term disability insurance provider with the same Lincoln Plan Designs the city currently contracts for. And renewing the existing EAP and wellness benefits through Halcyon Behavioral. And lastly, authorizing the city manager to execute any agreements and related documents necessary to effectuate the above. Are there any questions or concerns I could address for council?
So do Alicia, do we have any members of the public have any concerns or anything they want to comment on this item?
Not at this time, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council member Montes?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Wendy, I know you touched on all this stuff, but you know, we've still been getting, you know, concerns. So one of the main concerns, and I think I've explained it, that the the plans are going to be similar to what we have. People do like what we have. So just to reiterate, the plans, you've asked the plans to be essentially similar to what we have with an option, if the employee so chooses, to have something that may may present them with a cost savings?
So yes, for both blue sheet, we're currently blue sheet Anthem, the other blue, and Kaiser, they are offering an option as part of the mix that is a zero deductible, $10 copay. So it it models our current plan. It's actually slightly better. Because when we, when we get out of our deductible layer and into the rest, they go on to an 8020 PPO. Not everyone gets past their deductible, but for employees that typically get past their deductible if they want, they can have a plan with a with a zero deductible, $10 copay the entire time. They don't, they don't get to that layer where they have more out of pocket.
So and another question would be, and I know this is not easy to to answer because there's still other components to an employee's benefits package and and compensation package. So the question was going to be, is the employee going to be in a better or worse situation if this is implemented? So and and the answer that I gave was, well, right now, this is only one piece of the puzzle. So it's yet to see, you know, what sign up rates we have for Kaiser. And you know, the intention, I think, is to put the city in a in a better situation to to have a similar quality product at a lower cost so that the savings can be passed on to the employee.
So the, if we were to effectuate the change to Prism, we would, in one respect, we would have a better offering because now we have choice, choice of provider and choice of plans. And as you stated, this is only one piece of the puzzle. The city's contribution to health and therefore the amount employees may or may not pay for premium is negotiated as part of the MOUs. Under the existing MOUs, there is a cap on the city's contribution. That may change if we negotiate something different. But if we renewed as is and don't make the change, then there is not a lower cost option available. We have only the 28% renewal to consider. And then, as as you stated, it is only one piece of compensation. The city has historically always considered total compensation, its salary, its benefits, its retirement. And when you add all those pieces together, what does it look like? And so you have to balance, as you stated, Mr. Councilmember, how much are we spending on health and how much are we spending on the other pieces?
Okay, thank you. So I just take this as an as an opportunity that the city is trying to do everything that they can or that we can and you can to provide again, a quality service to the employees and try to realize any, you know, cost savings that we can pass on to the employee. Thank you, Wendy.
Council member Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just wanted to reiterate some of the stuff that Councilman Montes said. I just want you to know that when I got on council, the city had just switched their health insurance. And all I heard was kicking and screaming, they're unhappy. And we're kind of going back to what they had when I got on council. It, I think it has to do with not just I, everyone here. We sometimes have a hard time with change. We don't always like change. And we sometimes can't see past our nose that this is a good thing. It's it's hard, it's hard to shift. And so I know when we do shift, I'm going to hear it again, the kicking and screaming that I heard four or five years ago when we switched before. But I think after a while, our employees are going to realize this was the best decision. And I know we're not going to make everyone happy. That's just unreasonable to even think that's going to happen. So I would like to thank my colleagues and staff for hanging in there with, there is so much information. And it it's almost like you're not, you're so unsure of, you're not sure. We're just going on facts and data and trying to make the best decision that we can make. So I thank you for your time. I hope our employees are going to be patient. And I know change is not easy, but it with healthcare prices and rising and and, you know, tax dollars. That's our, our, our community is paying for this health insurance on the city side of it. So that's something they have to look at too. We have to look at both sides of it. So we're just going to hang in, hold on tight to your boots, councilmembers, because we heard it four or five years ago and we're going to probably hear it again. And and just remember that we're making the best decisions that we think are best for our employees and for our city and our community. So thank you, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gallegos. I don't see any more hands raised. So then therefore we will close this item and I will ask for a motion from my colleagues.
Mayor, move that we approve. Is that in D two?
There's a motion by council member Montes to approve item D two. Seconded by council member Viegas. Alicia, would you please call role?
Council member Gallegos?
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council member Montes?
Yes.
Council member Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to item E Administrator Reports. Item E one Fiscal Year Budget 2021, 2022 Presentation and Workshop. I believe Mr. Roger Sanchez has this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Roger Sanchez, Finance Director. I'd like to give you some projections for related revenues for the next budget year.
Excuse me, Roger? Sorry to interrupt, but I don't know if it's just my audio, but can everyone, is this audio coming in a little distant? I think your audio is coming in a little, I don't know if it sounds distant.
You may want to try changing your microphone.
Right now.
Can you say, I'm sorry, Roger, can you say that again?
Is that better?
No, no, it sounds like it's the same. It's oddly enough, Roger and I spent a lot of time on Zoom. Just a couple hours ago, it wasn't like this. So I'm not too sure what happened.
Is this better?
Yes, yes, that's definitely better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to discuss the projected revenues for the next fiscal year. Give you an introduction of some of the estimates that we see. And with that, I'd like to share my screen with you. Can you see my screen fine?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so like it's going to, it should be a short presentation unless obviously you have questions. We have, I'll provide some citywide revenues and a brief introduction to the American Rescue Plan as we referred recently about it from the Treasury Department. We will also discuss in detail the general fund revenues. And what I mean by the status quo is that there's some projections that we have on existing revenues, including the sales taxes and property taxes. However, on the enterprise funds, we do have a pending rate study, which thus impact the opinion of the council potentially. And and so this meeting may not necessarily indicate a any feedback from from council, but but rather I'll I'd like to provide some information on this topic. We'll also briefly discuss special revenues. So to give you some context, these are the citywide projected revenue for the upcoming fiscal year. And we do have the special revenue fund, the general fund group and the enterprise coming at $43 million. I do want to clarify that on the enterprise, because of the pending rate study that we have, this is subject to change and depending on the direction that the council will will lead. This is, this could be significant changes on on this. On the rescue plan, this is a total of 23.1 million that has been allocated by the Treasury Department. However, this is, this could take two years or more if we get involved with capital project items. So this is going to be broken down into multiple years. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. So overall, these are the revenues. This is not including transfers. And what transfers means is that, for example, we could have a transfer from the special revenue into the enterprise or from the special revenue into the general fund. So those are internal transfers within the city. What I'm demonstrating right here is more of revenues that are external in nature that are coming out from the city. And I think that's a more meaningful number for for the council. So this is more information similar, but it provides a historical context with actual amounts. As you can see, this is the enterprise funds, a historical context. And then we do have the general fund revenues with a historical context. Obviously, on the projected at the end of the year until we close the books, we will not know the exact figures. Potentially, we could have better than than anticipated. On the projected, this is what we have so far looking forward. Again, the enterprise fund is is subject to to review at this point. This is the special revenue from a historical perspective and a total, as you can see, where things are are heading on the revenue side. On the American Rescue Plan, very, very briefly, we're still studying the guidelines. There's a lot of reading and a lot of training that needs to take place before we can provide more meaningful feedback to to the council. But overall, I I wanted to give you. Is there a a feedback that I'm hearing or?
Yeah, sorry, Roger, because that was someone's line. It's been muted.
Okay, so on the American Rescue Plan, some of the items that the council has some discretion over relate to the topics of, again, these are broad topics and and they're subject to review still. The public health response, the replacement of potential public sector revenue loss. The the American Rescue Plan can also be used for water and sewer infrastructure. We can also address negative economic impacts with with community members and also with businesses in the community. There's also, it could be used as premium pay for essential workers. Again, there's a lot of subject for interpretation on this and and research as well. It could be utilized for the broadband infrastructure as well. Again, very, very brief introduction to the subject. So the general fund and measure K projected revenue, as you can see so far, the status quo and not including transfer is 32.2 million dollars. And about 80% is made up in the area of taxes. And as you can see, the other sections, including charges for services, license and permits, franchise fees and fines, refunds and other income. So with that, the taxes, there is a little bit more review as to what makes up this area. The historical context on the general fund and measure K projected taxes. So this is just focus more on the taxes at this point. So we do have the the property taxes and the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee. We also have the sales tax at this point. Then we have the measure K, as you can see back when it was started on that area. So it is projected that for next year, some estimates of $10 million at an annual sales taxes. These are some of the estimates that we're getting for our, from our consultants. Here's the hotel tax and the total taxes, as you can see. Again, there were some reductions on the hotel tax and also and but it's subject to, most likely is going to be higher than than we're anticipating and be more in alignment with the history. So on the enterprise funds, again, this is subject for change and because of the rate study at this point. But you can see the water, the sewer, solid waste and the transit. Some of the challenges that we're facing is that some rate increases that are potentially, well, that that are coming up most likely. And for example, the the solid waste, some of the early research shows that we expect between 30 to 40% increase, and this is because of estate mandates on compliance issues that we have on compost and 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 some the the rules that are coming up. So this is unfortunately, some of the state mandates that we're that we're seeing. But we also have many capital items that are coming up, capital projects that are there are many and they're large. You were going to have a meeting tomorrow, a special meeting for the capital improvement program. And you will have more details into the enterprise funds and the different areas. And you'll have a better picture of what this is about. So obviously, this impacts the the rate increases. So as far as the choices that the council may have is to reduce the number of projects or to increase the rates or to get into additional debt or potentially utilize the American Rescue Plan to mitigate some of the rate increases that are that are coming up. So this is a historical perspective. This is only the user charges related to the sewer fund. And again, this projected amount is is subject to change. So just keep that in mind. And this other chart shows the the year over year change. And and what that tells me is, well, what is the change between this year to this year? Well, it's 10%, 10.8%. And what is the change between six this year to this year is 9.4%. And that's what the story says is, is the change year over year. And the, on the sewer fund, there could be some potential increases, depending again on how we utilize. If there were no assistance from the American Rescue Plan or the some early estimates is in excess of 20% at this point on 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 increases for for the sewer fund. And it is because of the of the capital projects that are pending or that are that need to be reviewed. Again, this is all subject to council review at this at this point. And 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 the meeting tomorrow, it'll be critical for this piece of information. On the solid waste, we can see this is a somewhat of a conservative approach. Most likely, it could be higher, again, because of the state mandates. And as you can see, a 25%, what we're hearing at this point is actually between 30 to 40% increase on on the on the solid solid waste side. So something to to keep in mind. I don't think we'll be able to use I don't think we'll be able to use American Rescue Plan for for the solid waste area. That would be more for the sewer and water, whereas this is this is not for capital project items. But rather more for state mandates. The water fund, again, we we do expect some increases depending again how we mitigate the the revenues on the on the next year. As you can imagine, this is a big deal for the residents of Madera because what they see is what they see one bill. And they don't really understand that there's a sewer and the water and a solid waste and the state is mandating increases and all those things. But they see one single bill and and hopefully we could do something about mitigating the the increase of on the overall bill. So on the special revenue funds, this is the breakdown. As you can see, the the different, the state gas, the local transportation's development impact fees and the different funding sources. A lot of this is, it has a timing issues depending on on how we recover the the drawdowns to the revenues through drawdowns or we do transfers or complete projects. So so it fluctuates year over year, but overall, this is kind of what we're looking at for next year. So with that, if you have any any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I don't see any red hands raised from my colleagues yet. Do we have any public comments on this item? Alicia?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. Roger, if you can please take us back to that slide where you have the the water fund. I just wanted to point something out. Maybe you can expand on that.
I I apologize. I don't know if you can hear me, but I lost my I lost my, I cannot hear anybody.
Yeah, we we can hear you.
I'm trying to dial in. Excuse me.
Mister Mayor Garcia, it's okay. If we can move on, if there's any other questions. We can move on until Roger comes back because at this point, I don't think the questions are going to be heard.
So is there is something you would like to address, Naldo?
Well, can we can wait to Roger, but as we're waiting for Roger to try to come back on, the one thing that I did want to highlight for council is in years past, one thing that we've done is we've taken a very large document, presented to council, and we say, digest all this information and approve it. And one of the things that we're trying to do now is we're trying to break it down into more digestible pieces. Because it goes back to the analogy, how do you eat an elephant? Well, one bite at a time. If you may recall, at the last council meeting, Roger presented a little bit of information. Our goal is to present a little bit tonight. Tomorrow, Keith and his team will presenting the capital improvement program. And so if we can provide it to council in smaller pieces, because it is very complicated and it's a lot of information. We definitely don't want to overwhelm anyone. And then when we present council the budget, at that point, hopefully, we'll have gone through most of it in sections. At that point, you're seeing it for the first time as a whole. But at that point, you may not recall every detail, but the goal is to understand conceptually how we put it together. The numbers Roger went over today are preliminary. These are the types of numbers that Roger and his team get. We go through them as an organization. We try to digest them. We try to see if we're missing anything. And then we're we're continuously refining them along with the city consultants, along with Keith and his team to try to make sure that whatever package, once council gets the package, it makes sense and it's a comprehensible package. And it looks like, I believe Roger logged off, so we'll wait for him for a couple of minutes. But again, in the past, we haven't been more successful due to time to to try to present to council in pieces. Some of the pieces are obviously unknown. So Roger earlier said, we don't know how we're going to finish this year. Well, we don't because we still have forty five days left in the fiscal year. And so we're not going to know how we're going to finish because the year is not over. And we staff can get a pretty good estimate on expenses. The challenge we're going to have is we don't know how we're going to do on revenue because so much of our revenue is dependent on sales tax. We know how much we're going to get on property tax, but that's a fraction of what of how we operate. Sales tax for the city of Madera is one of the bigger items. And and those are things that are not necessarily dictated by us or not controlled by us. Rather, they're controlled by the community. And if more people buy local, then the city does better and then we have additional resources. And and so I believe we're probably still waiting on Roger. I'm not seeing him lag back on. He's obviously having computer issues, but if.
You know, what we can do also, but I don't know if my colleagues would agree. We could move on to the E two report and then come back to Roger when he comes back.
Not a good idea, Mayor.
Okay, so at this time, why don't we move on to E two report, update on river fire activity? Mister Watson? Chief?
Yes, Mister Mayor and Council. I I just, I wanted to come before you. There's a lot of concern out in the community about the the fires in the river and some questions of that. So I'd like to hopefully educate the public on kind of the process and what's going on. And I I know reading a lot of the comments and talking to people on scene of these fires is 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 they they want to put the blame on the council and the board of supervisors. And and I explain every time that it's that it's the council's doing what they can. So and that's kind of why I just wanted to talk about the fires. You know, the fires aren't the only issue, but currently with us being in in the summertime already, we're about a month ahead of time as far as how things are burning and when things are burning. So I'll share my screen. I just, it's not very many slides. I just wanted to kind of just try to give a little update. So can you see the fire engines or can you see the the PowerPoint?
Just say, oh, here we go.
And so we can see the entire presentation, Chief?
Okay, I'll leave it like that because it's going to switch screens on me for some reason. So I'll I'll leave it like that. So yeah, so we'll we'll start on E two, the river update. But so over the last ten years, the the amount of fires in the city of Madera have increased one hundred and sixty percent. If you look at fire history, you know, in two thousand eleven, it was about one hundred and fifty six fires. To date in twenty twenty one, we're already well over that one fifty six number. Last year being our highest number with four hundred and six. So you can kind of see it's kind of dramatically increased. And last year kind of really jumped up. We were pushing about three hundred in two thousand nineteen and then just over four hundred in twenty twenty. So as you're aware, the the city of Madera, similar to most communities, is struggling on how to react to the growing homeless population. Covid has only exacerbated the issue and we are limited on what we can do with the governor's orders. With the increase of homeless population comes increased fire activity and medical type emergencies for the fire department. The fire department has been given the necessary tools from the city council to combat these emergencies. The city council approved that side by side that we use to access these fires down in the emergency, down in the river, the medical emergencies down in the river. The city has provided updated tools on some of the fire engines. And so we have the resources we need and council is very supportive of that. So that's one of the big things the public needs to know. That that's the things council has the ability to do currently with these fires and and they're doing. The other thing is people are concerned about our firefighter safety. I can tell you that Cal Fire has some of the highest training levels in the world in the fire service. We're the third largest fire department in the world. Our training grounds, both north and south, have have all the latest training props to do with structural firefighting, vehicle accidents, medical hazardous material and obviously vegetation fires. So our firefighters are using strategy and tactics, not only to control the fire, but help prevent future fires. The fire yesterday down by the in the river by the fairgrounds is that fire started on one side and kind of moved to the other. We had the fire almost contained and then it spotted again and but our firefighters quickly reacted. The city and the county have a great working relationship with an automatic aid agreement. Yesterday, based on the winds, we went to Cal Fire through Master Mutual Aid and received assistance from Cal Fire fire engines also. So here's the challenge and it's it's the sixteen oh two process through fishing game. So a lot of people, you know, they're talking about the council should remove the brush, the board of supervisors should remove the brush. I can assure the public that the council is doing everything they can to secure the proper means to do this. The current sixteen oh two permit has been going on for well over for well over two years. And it's it's fishing games rules and it has to do with streams and waterways. So if someone look goes to the fishing game website, I just cut and paste this information off. And this pertains to the Fresno River running through the city of Madera. So, you know, there's a lot of things. The city has been aggressive on what they're doing to try to mitigate this. They've done everything they can to 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 comply with the governor's rules. They've looked at options for using goats. But California rules say they the goats produce too much methane and are too and too dangerous for the environment. In two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, the city and the county partnered with the both fire departments and both paid in jointly to have the brush removed and the vegetation removed on top of the banks outside of the sixteen oh two permit process. And we did that along the areas where there was wooden fences to try to provide a buffer zone for the residents. We did not and weren't able to complete that this year because of the increased population within the river. And to run that masticating equipment, it it just became too dangerous. And, you know, we wouldn't want to drive over a a person trying to trying to mitigate the brush. And, you know, the other thing is that a lot of people are saying, can't can't they just put a bulldozer down there and and plow through there and and do that? You can't. The arunda or the bamboo has to be pulled out from the the roots, has to be hauled off to a special facility. And any trees at chest height that have a caliper greater than two inches can't be cut. So there's a lot of different rules even with the sixteen oh two permit, which the county and city are are both going after. So, you know, the big thing is is we'll try to control these fires the best we can. And our number one concern out there is public safety. Our firefighters will take a risk gain analysis and and, you know, our goal is not to get anybody hurt, especially the public. So with that, if there's any questions, council, I'd be happy to answer them. And I know Chief Lawson and Lieutenant Foss are both on and and they can probably fill in the gaps that I missed.
Thank you very much for, Chief, you know, that last picture you showed really illustrates the dangers to your staff and to the public. And so just thank you very much for everything that you're doing. I will say that those poor goats are being scapegoated. Alrighty, let's Mister Rodriguez, I believe you had your hand up first.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. And Chief Watson, again, I want to thank you and your staff, also Chief Lawson for your help and and helping with the addressing the fires and and some of the the cleanup around the areas that are permitted. I did want to ask in regards to that sixteen oh two permit, I know years back, the city county again had collaborated in trying to do a a cleanup, but utilizing more of a taxpayers pay into a a storm fund or water fund that allows for for, you know, the cleanup around that river. Any case that the we have a wet year and what have you. But can you talk on on that on that subject? Is that something that that went through the same process as far as permit goes when that occurred years back?
I might have to raise my hand and ask for help from maybe Lieutenant Foss on on the current the current city sixteen oh two permit.
Sorry about that. Sure. So our current sixteen oh two permit, I do not know the date of expiration. I believe it expires twenty twenty four. It might expire as far as twenty twenty six. So we do have it for a couple more years at at least. Sorry, I'm going to turn my fan off in case I was giving background. Our current permit, what it allows is one hundred feet from all bridges. I believe it covers five different bridges in the city and it's one hundred feet in either direction for the removal of brush. So that's not very much realistically when we're considering the entire expanse of the river. But that's our current permit. There is some stipulations in it. If you have some specific questions for it, I could probably answer them, but in a nutshell, that's what we currently have.
So then a hundred feet, I mean, as you say, doesn't really cover much. But is there an additional permit that you need to go alongside the river, maybe covering a certain area that's long that's more than a hundred feet?
That's still that's still a sixteen oh two permit. And we are working with the county currently. The county should have theirs up and running within, I would say, a month. And that permit will allow us to piggyback off their permit to do the work into the river. So we're actually looking to partner with the county who's actively working on this. They have a, I don't want to misname their division, but I think it's Flood Control or Midair County Flood Prevention. Applied for that permit. They are getting it. They're finalizing it as we speak. As soon as that's available, we can piggyback off that permit.
And I believe I I misquoted earlier, but I believe that was the the intention of funds that could utilize is flood control funds to be able to help mitigate for for floods in the future. And I think the 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 cost for trying to get that done in the future, not doing it annually certainly just it 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 really multiplies. And I think, you know, in an effort, I know that with the governor's executive order, that really ties our hands to do certain cleanups and what have you. But I I think it would be it would be prudent for us to work with alongside the county to do this annually and utilize whatever funding's available and whatever permits we can get so that we don't we don't allow this to to really just, this brush is 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 just, you know, it's it's just not a good thing. And that goes for both the county and the city.
And I can say, I could address that a little bit for you, council member, if you'd like. I can say we seem to be having some of the best dialogue with the county regarding this than we that we've had in recent history. I know I'm meeting with them regularly. I believe you're meeting even with some of them occasionally. We are getting together with them. We do, we are aware that this is a countywide and citywide issue. We and we are aware it's a major issue. So we are partnering. My experience with them has been very great so far. We've been working together very well on this, trying to tackle this problem. So not just brush, but trash removal and everything else. We are addressing the the river problems.
I just wish we had more of a partner with the state, partnership with the state as well so that, you know, we would actually be able to move on these actions a lot sooner than later. But, you know, I I can voice out the frustration, a lot of constituents, a lot of people that live alongside and and continuously just making comments and wanting the city to do something. As you noted earlier, and and so did Chief Watson, it's not that the council isn't trying. I I think we have our hands tied behind our back. I think that's been expressed several times. But there seems to be a urgency, not only to prevent for public safety, but I mean, to prevent additional outage of all this foliage and and brush coming into the river that essentially will be a a bigger cost to the taxpayer later on. Thank you. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just wanted to thank our staff. A supervisor pictures had a town hall meeting and a section of it was about the homeless and the riverbed. And we had several of our staff that was there that answered questions. Because even though we are in the city, we do still have those same residents that we share as county. And so I'd like to thank everybody for donating your time last night to be on that call. It was a pretty long one. It's supposed to be an hour, went to an hour and a half and then it automatically shut every, they didn't even know we weren't done. Some of the questions were heavy, like Chief Watson was saying. They were heavy questions and they were coming at council and supervisors. And I just wanted to thank them for hanging in there, representing us very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, I want to say thank you, Mayor, first and foremost. Thank you, Chief Watson. Thank you, Chief Lawson. It's easy to speak on what's going on, but when you live it, when you when you wake up in the middle of the night and you see it and you're part of it, it's a different story. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your concern, Chief Watson, Chief Lawson. Thank you for the assistance that you bring out in the middle of the night at two o'clock in the morning and your guys are down there in the trenches fighting the fires and your your officers are standing there beside me as the fire is going. Yes, it is. It's it's bad. It's bad. And the thing about it is is that even though the brush burns underneath, the greenery still stands after the fire is gone. So it's going to take some time, it's going to take some work and I understand that. And the individuals that live near me, they ask, they complain, and all I can tell them is as soon as we can get some ordinances passed where we can get people in to be able to move this, um, the bulldozers to come in to remove whatever um greenery is down there because that's what's not burning and it's continuing to grow. But the bamboo is starting to die out now. So I thank you for the individuals that came in and did do some of the cleanup as far as the homelessness was concerned. That was a really ugly sight. And as I said, if you don't live it, you don't know. It's easy to speak on it, but when you have homelessness walking behind you, you have the fights, you have all the things and the officers and the fire department have to go off in those trenches, it's a lot. So I just want to commend you guys for what you are doing. I know Cal Fire, you guys are working hard. I know the uh um Madera Police is working hard, but all we can do is just come in together, the council. I thank each and every one of you guys as well, but this is something that needs to be addressed and it is being addressed and all we can do is just keep moving forward and I pray that our constituents understand and those that live on the firewall just just hang in here with us because it's not like it's going to happen overnight. This has been going on for a long time. So that's my take on it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Mr. Montes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. I also want to thank uh thank all staff and the chiefs. I know I was out there um yesterday and I had an opportunity to talk to Chief Watson. Um, when there was fire just down the street from my house, but um so my I I do have a question. So on June fifteenth, when um the COVID regulations are lifted, is that something that we're going to have? Are we going to have a different approach there or is it mainly the um the permit issue?
Well, I I think we'll have to wait and see what the governor does with a few other orders, but um I I it so I I'm not sure if that'll change anything or not. On yesterday's fire, we did get a uh a collective witness statement and someone that's willing to will was willing to give their name and number. So I mean, we do have a potential suspect on that fire. Uh, we our Cal Fire Law Enforcement folks uh and Madera PD are working together on another uh potential suspect. And I was hoping by tonight we'd have some good news, but um hopefully by the next council meeting, I'll be able to give some public comment on uh one or two or both of those suspects.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Lawson, would you like to chime in?
Yeah, just shed a little light on that. We have um reassigned SIU, our Special Investigations Unit down into the river um to work with Cal Fire in identifying um as as was mentioned earlier by Chief Watson, uh potential arson suspects. Um, and we're working in a in a combined partnership and a not to let uh the cat out of the bag yet, but we have several individuals identified that uh here in the near future, we're hoping to um get out of the river and put with put them um behind bars for arson. Um, but going forward, the Special Investigation Unit priority is that river and to identify arsons and any leads. Now, to answer the fifteenth, from a law enforcement standpoint, we will look at the certainly the governor's orders um and specifically looking for the homeless. And if those are relaxed, there will be a different approach immediately from the police department.
Thank you. Well, I don't see any more hands raised. I think we're done with this subject. Thank you very much for everyone who uh who contributed here. Uh, Arnoldo, did you want to say anything?
No, I just I want to thank the council for the support and staff for all of their efforts. It's um this is obviously a very sensitive use during a global pandemic. We're we're trying to navigate um just the litany of guidelines and regulations put out by the state. We do have some challenges. Uh, we have experienced a tremendous increase in trash and homelessness and some of those reasons are because some of the guidelines went back to what Chief Lawson said a a short time ago. Once once the orders are reexamined by the governor's office, we will uh recalibrate our efforts to try to mitigate any potential issues in the river bottom. Um, my my only ask of both council and the community is is to temper expectations with a little bit of patience because it is going to take us a a little bit of time to adjust some of our um um our our staff and our resources. But 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 we're very concerned of the river as well. We're Maderans as well. And and it just doesn't affect uh the people that live along the river. It affects all the community. And at the same time, the public perception and and the safety of our community members, including including the people that live in the river bottom. This is obviously a threat to their public health and and um they themselves don't want to live in conditions where their safety is jeopardized. So we're obviously concerned for everyone. So thank you, Mayor.
Alrighty. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I think we can close off item E two. Thank you, um Chief Watson for your report. Uh, Roger, I see you're back.
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Uh, you can proceed if you'd like.
I apologize for the technical difficulties. I can hear you well now. Um, just uh hopefully that information is useful and we will continue to provide on the next meetings uh additional uh information on the upcoming budget. The um, like I said, the area of the enterprise funds is something that needs to be looked at and needs to be addressed uh as far as what decisions will come from council. And uh, you know, as an example, the the sewer fund uh six years ago, uh the city had a rate uh study and uh there were a lot of unforeseen uh projects that depleted the reserves of the sewer fund, including uh the treatment plant, some uh um expansion or work on the treatment plant and other projects.
Excuse me, Roger. Did you want to show your screen again or are you just finishing up?
No, I'm just finishing up, Mr. Mayor. So just wanted to give put that on the radar that the the upcoming CIP, you will be you will have additional information tomorrow. There's a lot of projects in in the millions of dollars. Hopefully you'll have a better picture tomorrow.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. for Roger?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I had that question. I'm sorry. I Roger wasn't uh online when we had that question. So you mind if I proceed?
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, Roger, so I had asked if you if you pull up the waterfront, specifically the chart uh showing the uh waterfront, not sure if you can do that, but I just wanted you to expand on that because I know you did mention um that you couldn't really give us an exact answer on that, but more importantly, looking at the numbers from last year's projections to this year's, I'm sorry, from last year's figures to this this year's projections. Um, I I just wanted you to expand on that, please, and and how what kind of effect we could be looking at with respects to that waterfront. I'm not sure if you can pull up that chart.
So I uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, are you talking about this?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay. So um
And so more importantly, Roger, referring to the waterfront user charges that you pointed out from one year to the next, from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. Um, you had uh made a reference that uh that could certainly change. Um, can you provide some insight or expand on that?
Oh, yes, 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 uh, council member. So this this particular one on the projected for the current year that we're at, until we close the books, we will not know, but but more importantly is the upcoming year, what is going to be the increase? That's a big question mark. Uh, because um on the on the early draft on the rate study, unfortunately, I do see some significant rate increases uh if we were to leave things alone of um and what I mean by that is how do we fund those projects? Uh, and the only answer is really either to reduce the answer is to to reduce the projects or to um increase the rates. So uh, the other solution is to utilize the American Rescue Plan. So depending on what the council's discretion is, uh really this could go um, this could be maintained, it could be a modest increase or it could be a a significant increase if you choose to accept the the many projects that will be shown tomorrow. Uh, so that's that's the case both for the water fund and for the sewer fund. There's really no choice for the for the solid waste um um uh as we see those state mandates. So hopefully that answers some of the questions, uh, Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Roger. And more importantly, it just kind of shows a picture to highlight that you know, at times a city might be collecting a a surplus or what have you, but underneath all that, you know, there's a a vast amount of need in capital improvement projects. Um, and um, I know that we have to have priority over those because that's what we do. We provide services to our constituency, to our residents. And and that's the core of what the city is, is to provide services to the to the community. So I I'm glad you explained that. Hopefully tomorrow we get a better picture once those rate studies are identified and and we can see a better picture of what that uh uh of what that's going to present to the city and what we do moving forward. So thank you, Roger. Appreciate you expanding on that.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else, Roger?
Uh, that's all I have, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much for that report. So that is an update only correct. Uh, we're not looking for any any direction or action.
Now, this is uh, this is information as to the projections and you know, as we have on the upcoming meetings, we will have uh the projections, the estimates for labor, for um uh MNO and all those things. And as we put the budget together, that that'll be um uh all the way until uh the middle of June, hopefully when council adopts the budget. So we will continue to to provide information. This was more uh specializing and focusing on the revenue side.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. Uh, we will now move on to item F, council member reports, announcements or future agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and council members to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. So we'll start with Councilmember Gallegos.
Perfect. Um, Mayor Garcia, I just wanted to reiterate what happened in Madera County Transportation Commission. I found out this week and I didn't read it or see it anywhere else that it is um Bike to Work Week. So um I would challenge all my council members to bike to work, but Councilman Montez works in Fresno and we have some like chief lives in Fresno and and Dan and people would have to bike really far. We want them to make it to work safe. So I'm just challenging to bike somewhere this week to the store, to the park. Um, at least one time this week as it's National Bike to work and a lot of us work too far. So um, do it, everyone. Get on the bike, get some heart pumping and um let everybody else know it's uh Bike to Work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh uh, Mayor Garcia. I know that maybe you can touch on this, but I wanted to um congratulate the city in forming that partnership with the Madera Irrigation District. Um, yesterday we were at the uh I want to say the ceremonial maybe uh groundbreaking, uh but uh it was good to see both the city Madera uh staff, uh council members, elected officials, and also for the MID and this great partnership. I think it's certainly um uh that uh that that that's an attest to the the hard work for our city manager and and putting this uh partnership together so that we can have a recharge basin back at the municipal golf course. And I know the aesthetics there will also certainly be enhanced. So I'm I'm just excited about that also. Uh, I know that through the Madera County Transportation, we're sending a letter uh to uh Congressman Costa's, I think, office and they they they're putting that uh Avenue thirteen project online. So hopefully that certainly realizes their key and 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 thanks to you and your staff, Arnoldo. Uh, hopefully we can get some of those uh uh funds to be able to get that that project going because I know that's quite a bit of that's a big ticket item and it's something that we certainly need, especially if we continue to grow um in either direction. So those are my comments for now. Uh, wish you all a safe uh uh a safe uh night and that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember uh Montes.
Oh, I would just like to say thank you again to all staff uh for keeping us in line, keeping us busy. I know the last uh couple of weeks and this week is is a busy week. So thank you for all all your hard work.
Councilwoman Evans.
I'd like to also thank everyone. Um, my report is on June the, no, excuse me, May the twelfth, I had the first town hall, which was coffee with the councilwoman and I want to thank the chief, the city manager, the everyone that was there, um Chief Watson, Chief Lawson, Alicia, am I missing anyone? If I did, please forgive me, but it was a great turnout. Um the constituents all came out which that were there. We had probably close to about twenty five people total to show up at Jack in the Box over on Yosemite and it was it was very warm, it's very welcoming and you know, each one of the departments had an opportunity to just, you know, kind of enlighten us on the things that they're doing. And those individuals that were residents were really quite happy with the information that we received. Um last this past Monday, we had a march at the Meadows for the senior lives matter and the residents of the Meadows are really excited about the things that have been going on here and the information that was, you know, given, the mayor came out and different individuals. Um, Supervisor Letty, um, she came. So I just want to say thank you. There's things that are going on. And also on um Ellis and Tulary, there was a car that kind of ran into uh telephone poles and a light poles. And now we have a new flashing stoplight that's there and there's going to be some other things that are going to be put up there to help protect the homeowners because they're really afraid right now because the way the car came in, their bedroom is first facing the street and instead of the the street light and the tree stopping them, if it wouldn't have been there, there may have been some fatalities. So I want to thank the city for that. Um, Dan Foss, um city manager, Arnoldo, I just want to thank you guys for taking the time and and just really doing engineering department. So those are the things that I want to give a shout out for and coffee with councilwoman, it works, you guys, it really works. So we'll have our next one, June the sixteenth, and I hope to see more of you there. But anyway, thank you so very much. Thank you, staff. And I'm done.
Councilmember Viegas. Do you have anything that you'd like to share or? I guess that's a no.
You're on mute, Artemio.
Can I have a
Yes.
Okay, I just found out that I think that happened yesterday or maybe Monday during the night. I I went to uh my morning walk and I saw the the gangs number fourteen. I talked to Arnoldo about that already. They look like we had to have a problem with the gangs coming up and start painting the walls for graffiti. So that's that's the only report I have. They just paint the it does um academia and Pecan and we have a They just painted, that's academia and Pecan, and we have a burglar. So in that section, they went over there and painted, they painted 14, like, 20 feet in the wall. So we're going to have a problem with the gangs. I, I didn't see in a year and four months I've been living there. I haven't seen none of that before. So it's a very new neighborhood, but that is, it's going to be a problem with them. They haven't come and paint. So that's my only report I have.
Thank you, Mr. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I don't have any reports tonight. I just want to apologize for the goat joke. But other than that, I want to wish everybody a good evening. Have a, have a good evening. Thank you very much for your time and your participation, and we will all see you soon. Hilda, could you take us to call session?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have G1, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency Designated Representatives, Arnaldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, and Shay Johnson. Organizations, General Bargaining Unit, Madera Affiliated City Employees Association, Midmanagement Employee Group, Madera Police Officers Association, and Law Enforcement Midmanagement.
Thank you very much, and everyone have a good night.
Good night.
Yes, thank you Mayor. The City Council met in closed session. There is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Let me get back to my -- losing it here very quickly. Thank you very much for that, Hilda. We are calling this meeting adjourned at 9:27. Thank you very much for your participation. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.